All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Regular Meeting of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education meeting on September 11th, 2025. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:30. And to item two on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. We do invite you to stand if you are willing and able to join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Item three this evening is the standing approval items. 3.1 is acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda this evening? Trusty Van Heidsma.
Yes, I have a resolution I'd like to add to the agenda, if possible, under item number four.
Item four, perfect. And also it's been brought to our attention that the girls' golf team is no longer requesting to go on a field trip that was scheduled on our agenda this evening. So I would like to delete consent to Jida, consent item. 8.2. Is there any other additions or deletions this evening? Here, you know, the agenda is trust. Yes, thank you.
I'll resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves, oh, I'm sorry, that we approve the agenda as amended.
Any discussion on the motion? Seen none, signify by saying aye if you agree.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 3.2 this evening is the approval of the minutes, like to entertain a motion. Trusty Van Heidsma.
Thank you. Be it resolved that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes, August 7th, 2025, special minutes, financing facilities, August 14th, 2025, regular minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trusty Wiki, is there any discussion on the motion before us? Seen it, I'll call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Bring us to agenda item four this evening, which are our proclamations. 4.1 tonight is a board proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd like to ask trustee Wiki to make that presentation.
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a month-long celebration of Hispanic and Latino history and culture, and is important because it provides an opportunity to celebrate the integral part the Hispanic-Latino community has had in growing and strengthening our democracy. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides an additional opportunity to explore the incredible impact Latinas and Latinos have had on the United States, Michigan, and Royal Oak for generations. And whereas the Latino presence in America spans centuries, predating Spain's colonization of what is now part of the United States, and they have been an integral part of shaping our nation since the Revolutionary War. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a week-long celebration in 1968 under President Johnson, and was expanded to a month by President Reagan 20 years later, in 1988. The month-long celebration provides more time to properly recognize the significant contributions Hispanic-Latino Americans have made in the United States. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month does not cover one single month, but instead begins in the middle of September and ends in the middle of October. The timeframe of this month is significant because many Central American countries celebrate their independence days within these dates, beginning on September 15th with Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. By aligning with these independent dates, Hispanic Heritage Month honors the resilience and determination of the Hispanic community. And whereas we will continue to advocate for Hispanics, Latinos, as representation matters, Latinos and Latinas continue to shape our nation as business owners, activists, artists, public servants, and more. From serving in the U.S. military to being champions in the fight for civil rights, Latinas and Latinos remain strong leaders and change makers. Now, therefore, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month for Royal Oak Schools.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second to the resolution? Trustee Alexander, any discussion on the motion? Seen it, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been adopted. Just to 4.2 this evening with a resolution for the September 11th remembrance, I'd like to ask Secretary Anderson to present.
Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the United States of America was subjected to a series of terrorist attacks that resolved in the tragic loss of nearly 3,000 innocent lives at the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and aboard United Airlines Flight 93. And whereas these attacks claimed the lives of men, women, and children from all walks of lives, life transcending race, religion, and national origin, forever changing the lives of their families and loved ones. And whereas in the face of this incomprehensible tragedy, countless first responders, ordinary citizens, and service members acted with extraordinary courage, selflessness, and valor, risking and in many cases sacrificing their own lives to save others. And whereas the heroes of that day, including firefighters, police officers, emergency medical personnel, and the brave passengers of Flight 93, demonstrated the unwavering spirit of the American people, inspiring the nation to unite in resilience and resolve. And whereas it is the solemn responsibility of the Royal Oak Schools to educate the next generation about this pivotal moment in our nation's history, ensuring that the victims are never forgotten, and the lessons of unity, courage, and service are taught. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education, on this day of remembrance, honors and commemorates the memory of all those who were lost September 11th, 2001, and extends its deepest gratitude to the heroes who acted with such courage. Be it further resolved that we affirm our commitment to educating our students about the events of September 11th, 2001, and the enduring values of freedom, compassion, and patriotism that define our community and our country.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Cook. I think all hands at one time. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seen it, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been adopted. To 4.3 this evening, which is a resolution in regard to Suicide Prevention Month, and I'd like to ask Vice President Alexander to present.
Whereas suicide is among the top 10 leading causes of death in the United States, resulting in about one death every 11 minutes. Additionally, suicide attempts result in an even larger number of non-fatal intentional self-harm injuries. Suicide is a problem throughout the lifespan. In the U.S., it is the second-leading cause of death for people 10 to 34 years of age, the fourth-leading cause of death among people 35 to 54 years of age, and the eighth-leading cause of death among people 55 to 64 years of age. And whereas September is known as Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which mental health advocates, individuals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and communities around the country unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. Whereas September 7th to the 13th, 2025, is National Suicide Prevention Week, with World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th, 2025. Whereas Royal Oak Schools publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas all Royal Oak residents are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards reducing suicides. And whereas September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month and provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis. As the world joins together to honor the memories of those we lost to suicide and their loved ones, may we recommit to ensuring that help and support are accessible to all our citizens. Now, therefore, Royal Oak Schools does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month and September 7th to the 13th as Suicide Prevention Week.
All right, thank you. I do think it appropriate at this time we take a moment of silence to honor those of our students who we've lost through the years to suicide. All right, thank you. With that, do we have a second to the resolution? Trustee Cook, is there any discussion on the resolution before us? Seen it, I'll call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been adopted. It's to agenda item five this evening, which is our first opportunity for public comment. Just kidding. I'm reading along so quickly. Moving on to 4.4, which is our resolution regarding the state budget impasse. And I'll ask trustee Van Heidsma.
Thank you. I turned it on, sorry, Jared. Resolution of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education regarding state budget impasse. Whereas of the date of this meeting, Michigan lawmakers remain stalled on the state budget for the 25, 26 fiscal year, creating uncertainty regarding funding for public education. Whereas required, as required by law, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approved a budget for the 26th fiscal year by the statutory deadline of July 1st, 2025, despite the absence of any clear guidance or finalized state budget. Whereas the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education remains fully committed to supporting our educators, administrators, students, and families in our district, and to ensuring that public education continues uninterrupted for all students, regardless of the funding status determined by the state government. Whereas the Democratic-controlled Michigan Senate and the Republican-controlled Michigan House of Representatives are currently at an impasse with significant differences in their proposed spending plans, preventing timely resolution of this critical issue. Whereas educators, administrators, and staff continue to provide a high-quality education to our students despite the uncertainty surrounding state funding, and deserve fair and equitable compensation and resources to do so. Whereas the education of our students does not pause while policymakers debate funding, and it is imperative that we avoid any disruptions to the educational experience of our students in the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education strongly encourages all members of the Royal Oak community to contact their state representatives and express the importance of resolving the current budget impasse so that our students and staff are not negatively impacted by the ongoing uncertainty surrounding state education funding. Be it further resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education reaffirms its commitment to providing a high-quality education to all students in our district, and will continue to advocate for the resources necessary to support the success and well-being of our educators, students, and families.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second to the resolution? Trustee Jazinski. Is there any discussion on the resolution before us? Secretary Anderson.
I'm presuming this will pass. I know I will certainly be voting for this. I'm thanking all my colleagues for bringing this up in this meeting and informing the public of what's going on and what's not going on with our legislature. But I also wanted to ask that we, if this passes, we send a copy of this to our legislators in Lansing.
We can, we can certainly do that.
Any other comments? I'd just thank trustee Van Heidsma for turning what she originally intended to be a letter to the legislatures to a quick turnaround into this wonderful resolution we just heard. So thank you for your work on that, Marion. We see no other comments, I'll call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been adopted. Again, brings us to agenda item five this evening, which is your first opportunity for public comment. If you would to make a public comment, a person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place a card in the basket prior to the citizen comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you're offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and we appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comments should be referred to the superintendent or his designee for review, study, and a future response. Thank everybody in advance for their cooperation. There have been no requests filled out at the doors. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board at this time? All right, seen it. Move on to agenda item six tonight, which is recognitions, presentations, and reports. Item 6.1 tonight is the recognition of sponsors at our Welcome Back events, and I will turn this over to Dr. Yuanis.
Thank you, President Chahorsky, I appreciate that. I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about our second annual Royal Oak Schools Family Welcome Event that took place on Thursday, August 28th, from 4:30 to 6:45, right before the first football game. The weather held out for us, we were a little concerned about the rain, but it ended up moving away from us and just affected us a little bit. But I just want to talk about, I want to share some pictures here that we have to kind of show what was going on that night. We talk a lot about community partnerships in Royal Oak Schools. We talk about being a community of excellence. And this event really is a community celebration that brings over 20 community organizations to our schools and a way for us to connect and learn more about the resources and programs that the community businesses can support for us. People that attended were able to get an opportunity to connect with our school district leaders. Our buildings each had representation there from PTA and building principals. Mascots with Dr. Tofelski, as you can see there. That's a great one. I thought you'd like that one. And then, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I knew he would love that one. Dr. Tofelski's in the back there, yeah, just in case, yeah. And our board members, of course, were present there as well. And then, as you can see, some pictures we have here from some community partners that were able to attend. But again, events like this is a great way, great ways for us to bridge the school-to-community relationships that are important for a community of excellence to sustain. And what I wanted to do is just take some time tonight to recognize some of the sponsors that are here with us tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and say their names, and if you could stand there, we can all acknowledge you. I know Lisa Lu from Royal Oak Youth Assistance is here. You can please stand. And then Nego Do from Vibe Credit Union is here. And then I believe Eric Izad from, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, Andre, I'm sorry, from Art Credit Union, thank you. And the community, the list of community partnerships is about a page and a half. So I wouldn't be able to say, thank you to everyone individually, but on behalf of our school board and Dr. Tofelski, we want to thank all the community partnerships that were there. I think we can give you a round of applause for your commitment to Royal Oak Schools and our community. Looking forward to next year's event. Thank you.
Do we have any comments on that agenda item? Trusty Van Heidsma.
Shocker, I have a comment, I know. So I just wanted to thank all of you for being there. And my heart is with Royal Oak Youth Assistance, as you all know. But I, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that just they were partners through this particular event, but they're partners with us throughout the whole year. And I know they're visible in a lot of the work we do, the back-to-school for our staff, and just, you know, in a lot of different spaces. So I really appreciate all your support to our schools and to our students and to our teachers, and it's really truly appreciated. So thank you so much for being here tonight as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seen it, this to agenda item 6.2 tonight, which is a recognition of Jeff Sinewick. Now ask Ms. Isabella to make that presentation.
Good evening. Jeff, if you wouldn't mind coming up either to the podium or to the table while we talk about you this evening. Not only is Jeff Sinewick one of our most loyal employees of Royal Oak Schools. He has been an employee for 40 years now, and a lifelong resident and started with Royal Oak Schools in kindergarten. So that adds another 13 years to your commitment to Royal Oak Schools. Jeff's current role with the district is our operations manager. So he's day in, day out throughout our buildings, but in charge of maintenance, custodial grounds, and transportation, which is quite a heavy lift, but he does it with grace every day. So we just wanted to thank you and appreciate you for your 40-plus years with Royal Oak Schools. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. But I, the time, the time goes by quick. And it's, it's been an honor to, like I said, work in my hometown. And I've never had a commute over three minutes, so. I think, hey, yeah, I think it's been a lucky thing. I do really like what I do, as hectic as it gets at times. And I'm, I'm not sure if I could do anything that wasn't hectic at this point, or 24 hours a day. But I very much appreciate the recognition. Thank you very much. Yeah. Lockman. Right, right next, well, it was right next to Keller, yeah. I went to Keller Junior High, then Don, then Don Darrow. Yes.
Well, I think I'd like to, I'm sorry, Mr. George.
Go ahead.
Oh, oh, I'd like to thank you, Jeff, too. I think, you know, we don't always think about it, but like, your staff, the minute school is over, your team's like super engaged, right? Just to get everybody ready for the next school year. And it's like, like you said, a 24-hour-a-day thing. So, but just thank you because our schools are always ready for when the kids and the staff come back that first day. You know, everything looks shiny, clean, and new and pretty.
That's what we aim for. And, yeah, I can't say enough about our, our staff. And, and, well, as I spent many years with them, the, the maintenance staff is really second to none. So I, as I said, well, for them, I will say that I appreciate it.
Jeff, so I was joking with you last week. And I had in my mind what your age might be. You told me you were here for 40 years, and my joke to Jeff at that point was, were you in kindergarten and climbing on the roof and fixing the HVAC real quick? But I'm serious, and I do thank you for everything you do. And I know that your department is in very capable hands, and I've never had any doubt in your abilities or anything you tell us. We just believe because you're the expert over there.
I appreciate it. And I, in, in this particular role, I've, you know, I've had a lot of help. As I said, support team, but I also have Kathy who beats me up about budget and tells me about POs. So I do appreciate her tutelage, though, because it's been immensely helpful. Thanks again.
Any other comments for Jeff?
Thank you, guys.
Agenda item 6.3 this evening is our diversity, equity, and inclusion presentation. And I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Phillips.
Good evening, everyone. We just got a few quick updates. We'll start off with launch into learning the DEI sessions for that. DAPSEP, the Family Welcome Back Night Belonging Survey, IFLC Annual Impact Meeting wrap-up, and ending with the quick Odysseys reminder. So I was able to, or honored, I'd say, to host two, lead two sessions during our launch into learning. It was a great day. I geared my sessions towards new staff members and staff members who typically do not attend our late-start PDs. So we talked about DEI in action in Royal Oak Schools, fostering inclusive learning environments, cultural responsive teaching, implicit bias, microaggressions and how to address them and counter them, courageous conversations, developing and fostering those positive academic mindsets for our students, self-care for our staff, building belonging for our staff and our students, and so much more, all in 60 minutes. So that was really fun. I did two sessions because this year I wanted to make sure I was able to attend at least one other session. So I was able to go to a part of our Book of the Month hosted by Shannon and Higgin from Adams Elementary. And for my second half of that hour, I was able to attend Dr. Tofelski's session on cultural responsive teaching. Amazing. So it was really great day. Moving on to a program that I've talked about to other staff members, and I just want to make sure our community knows about it. So it's DAPSEP, it is celebrating its 25th, or I'm sorry, 50th year in 2025 or 2026, one of the two. But we're coming upon the registration period for their fall 2025 courses. It's a pre-K through 12 program. And right now, they have openings for all of the, almost all of their classes. It's geared towards STEM classes. The thing that I love is it's all across the state for some of the different programs. They offer STEM classes, scholarships, hello, high schoolers, college tours, financial aid for different things for all the classes, because a lot of their courses and their camps are low to no cost. And so much more. I cannot brag about this program enough. My daughter is probably on her fourth or fifth rotation in DAPSEP. That's her in the right-hand corner, holding a snake at the biology class that she took at, just this past summer, at. at just this past summer at Baker College here in Royal Oak. So that was her first time, and my first time, actually seeing the campus here, and it's amazing. So I cannot brag enough about it. Please visit dapsup.org to sign up the students for these amazing programs. And another shout-out to our Family Welcome Back Night. At this Welcome Back Night, my DEI table had a "Howdy/Rodeo" theme, and we did a, just a one-question survey of how has Royal Oak Schools helped to foster that sense of belonging for our staff and students? So the survey came back with some great results. I learned that school and district belonging efforts have helped students to make new friends, ease the transition to, into new school district, and some were moving into a new state. I was able to talk to a lot of new families as well verbally in person, helped students to feel more comfortable and welcome, hosting outdoor events such as the Welcome Back Night, and open communication from our principals. They said has helped, both helped to foster a sense of belonging and the Book of the Month program. So at our elementary schools, they said those books, celebrating diversity and different cultures, has aided in mirrors and windows efforts for their families. So we had a great time, as Dr. Yona said, just a little bit of rain, but then it cleared out. It was a beautiful night. And we had our Interfaith Leadership Council Annual Impact Meeting, so I believe I told you all that was headed to it at our last meeting. It was a great experience, and they premiered the New Journey/IFLC video, and you'll see some familiar faces, and I wanted to make sure you all were able to see it. We didn't have a playback, playback issue. Let's try that again.
My name is Ari Solomon. I'm going to eighth grade at Royal Oak Middle School this fall. One of my classmates told me, the guy from 1945 was a good person, which isn't really good to tell you. So I took it to the principal. I think that might have been the best decision I could have made. This program is important to me because we need to appreciate different viewpoints and spread kindness and inclusion. The one word I could use to describe RBJ is amazing, because each journey was exciting. I got to experience different religions and cultures from around the globe. Amazing to me is that it was just so generally eye-opening, seeing how people lived what they believed in, why they believed in it, and how their religion and background became to be. All the way around us, and to kind of disperse and destroy the different stereotypes of different religions.
Even people through RBJ, all of these other journey, was a big thing, to see how people come from other schools, different communities, and different places, just in general. I'm so connected to people from RBJ, my friend Alex and my friend, my best friend now, Lucas, who we talk to almost every other day, either through text messages or through Snapchat. It's been wonderful to talk to him and meet him and see where he comes from and see the other people of different schools and different communities other than my own. I highly recommend doing it. It was a lot of fun. I got to meet a lot of new people and a brand-new best friend.
I believe that programs like Journeys are extremely important in education. Journeys helps to cultivate well-rounded and well-informed, yet still curious learners. And in today's society, it's imperative that we ask questions and seek additional knowledge before making any assumptions and judgments. Journeys helps to facilitate that learning process, for sure. From the first journey that I was able to attend, I immediately observed the tremendous impact that the program had on our students.
The impact of the Journeys program on our students was evident on multiple levels, academically, socially, and personally. It moved learning beyond the textbook and allowed students to engage with real people. Many students shared that it challenged them to think more deeply about their own belief. Socially, students developed stronger communication and empathy skills. They learned how to ask respectful questions, listen with an open mind, and appreciate perspectives that are different from their own. I highly recommend this program and can say that it has positively impacted my school district in so many ways.
I feel that everybody who gets the chance would benefit from it.
I would definitely recommend it. A lot of my friends, it's a very fun experience. Also skipping school is also very fun, a lot of being here.
And as my grandmother told me, it's always good to have a little bit of faith, no matter what is given.
Can we clap it up for those testimonies? We got students good so well there. And it was such an amazing night where we got to come together with different leaders throughout the state and different districts and just celebrate everything that Journeys and IFLC in general has done throughout the year and their future plans, and they got a lot of feedback from us, the families and the staff members and the students about what will make the programs even better. So one of the last things that makes it even better is what they've expanded to. I've shouted this program out a few times, and I also listed it in our district dispatch for September, so please visit that if you need the flyer or the link. But the Odysseys program is the program that I said is geared towards individuals and families who want to do the Journeys program, but they're not in seventh grade, and it's in the evening times as well. There will be about four to five places that we'll visit during the series. I'll be attending for sure. It's September 16th, from 6:00 to 8:30 for our first journey, quote-unquote. And the registration is still open. You can scan for that QR code, visit our dispatch, or contact me if you have any other questions. But that's all I have, if there are any questions.
Tracy Van Hetzma.
So as always, thank you, Ms. Phillips, for your presentation, and thank you for being participant in our Welcome Back event. And also, the, sharing the, the video clips from when the students came to our board meeting last, I can't remember what it was.
That was April, I believe. It was in the spring, for sure.
But, but seeing the snippets, just that memory triggering again, how amazing those students were to be able to come forward and, and just articulate very detailed their experiences and how much they enjoyed it, and how much it expanded, you know, their view of the world. And so I'm very grateful for you, you know, bringing that program to our students. I think it's just amazing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and we're signed up again for this coming school year, so I'm excited for that.
Tracy Zenzki.
The registration fee? Sorry. The registration fee? Is that for each event, or is that the series? You said there's gonna be like a couple.
I believe it's for each event that I have to double-check.
Makes sense, I just wasn't sure. Okay.
And there'll be meals and everything served at each journey as well?
Secretary Anderson.
This is not a question. This is a thank you for bringing positive reports every month, and in the middle of a lot of education and other news that hasn't been so positive, I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you all. Thank you all.
Tracy Wiki.
As you were coming up, I knew that earlier in the week somebody had mentioned your name.
Okay, okay. Uh.
And it was at the Adams PTA.
Yes, I presented to Adams this week. Yes.
So the work that you do carries through, throughout the entire district.
Thank you so much. Our Adams families reached out. They wanted to know just update on DEI initiatives, district-wide, what will we be doing this year? So I presented about 30 minutes. I had about 30 to 35 minutes with their team the other day, so thank you.
Anybody else? No, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you.
Before we move on any further, our wonderful sponsors from the event, we will not be offended if you want to leave and go home and enjoy the rest of your evening. But if you want to stay and hang out with us, you are more than welcome.
President Chahorsky and I were just remarking earlier how fascinating the audit process is, so this is your cue to exit. Sorry, friends.
Why are they running?
We love them. Joey, we love you. But after 26 audit processes, wait, no, 23 for me, I can, I can say that it's polite to ask our friends if they would like to go.
If you keep talking like that, they're going to modify our opinion.
I'm so proud of you, trust me.
All right, 6.4 this evening on our agenda is our student representatives to the board report. Can I see Grace is here? Grace, do you have anything to report for us?
Hello, everyone. We just had a few events we had on last week and then a couple new events next week. Last week, we had the Raven Rally, where students could come and check out all of the clubs and sports ROHS has to offer. There were some really great student group performances there and a really great turnout of students, and we hope that everyone got the opportunity to find a group they really were interested in or aligned with and get involved with them. This last Monday was also Curriculum Night, where parents had the opportunity to follow their child's schedule for the night and kind of walk their classes, see what their classes were about, and meet all of their teachers. Next week will be Homecoming Week, with the pep rally during the day on Friday, the Homecoming Parade, and game's also gonna be on Friday, with the parade starting at 5:00 and the game kicking off at 7:00. The dance will be on Saturday night, with Spirit Days running all throughout the week. And that is all we have, if there are any questions.
Do you have any questions for Grace? Grace, I have a question you might not know the answer or be able to answer. But with all this crazy talk about the budgets in the state, are you hearing anything from your friends or the students?
Yeah, I think we're all just confused about how it's gonna play out and what that's gonna mean for our future, as well as classes underneath us, such as freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and how it's gonna play out for their future as well as ours.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry you're going through this, but.
Yes, thank you, guys.
All right, 6.5 tonight is the long-awaited and exciting Audit Review.
Thank you.
So do I.
Okay, let's trade sides. Okay, is this on?
I think so. I agree with you.
All right, good. Okay. I usually stand, but I brought Joey with me tonight, so before we get started, let me talk about what you have in front of you. Let me back up first. So Joey is the manager in charge of the audit, and I'm the partner on the job. So most of you, if you're in the building, you're gonna see Joey. He is here doing all of the hard work. He makes my job look easy and makes me look good, so. But I wanted to bring him tonight, too, so you could all meet him, just in case a future board meeting, if I'm not able to attend, you have a face with a name, too. So I know you had mentioned earlier about the state not passing their budget yet. Well, the federal government also hasn't released some federal compliance requirements that, as your auditors, we need to follow. And I know Kathy mentioned she was on a webinar today, and we have heard, too, that MDE says we cannot release your final audit yet until the federal government says, yes, here's the compliance requirements, and they're good to go. So we have draft form, so I apologize, they're not the normal, pretty, nice-bound copies that you usually have. So if you're wondering why it's draft all over everything, that is why. Something out of all of our control in this room, and we just are impatiently waiting for them to say, okay, you're good to go, and then we can release it. So we are on top of it, and as soon as it's ready, we're gonna get with Kathy and we'll get it finalized. So you do have draft copies of, sure, no, you're fine.
Can I ask if you have any idea what would be holding that up? Are you expecting anything majorly different from the past?
No, no, we are not. So the federal compliance supplement basically tells us, as your auditors, what we need to test for each specific federal grant. So every year, we look at all of your federal awards, and we have to go through a calculation that tells us which ones are what we call your major programs, and then we have to audit those. There's a lot of different scenarios and requirements as to why you have to audit some or not. We won't get into that. But they basically, it's the guidelines, our audit program comes from the federal government, and that's the steps we, as your auditors, your independent auditors, need to follow, and then MDE looks for that report from us at the end of the year. So we haven't heard anything. We were kind of like, why would you release a draft if the final was coming close, you know? So we, we really have no idea. We don't, I mean, internally, we've talked with the Quality Control Manager, too. We do not anticipate any major changes where we would have to come on-site and do anything, but until we have it in our hands, I can't really say. So you do have a draft copy of the financial statements, which is the big thicker copy. You'll see a stapled copy, the single audit, so this is all the federal stuff, all your federal grants are in here. This is really what's holding up the process here. And then you have a stapled letter, which is the governance letter. So I know it's a lot of information, and I'm gonna go over the highlights real quick tonight, but if you don't get a chance to read everything and really digest it, I encourage you to read the letter. And then in here is a section called the Management's Discussion Analysis. I would encourage you to read that, too. It might be, I don't know, eight to 10 pages long, not, not too long. So if, you know, numbers aren't your thing and a county lingo confuses you, I would encourage you just to read those few sections. So tonight, we're gonna go over the highlights. Let me see if I need to point, there we go, all right. And as I mentioned, everything's in draft form, so the Michigan Department of Education requires every school district in the state of Michigan to have an independent annual audit performed every year. Management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And then, as your auditors, what happens is my team and I come in, we audit that information presented, and then we issue you an opinion on it. And the district was issued an unmodified opinion, and as we were talking a little earlier, it sounds, it's a funny term, right? But that's the best opinion, it's what you want. It means there's no material modifications that need to be made in those financial statements. So now we'll cover just a couple of highlights from your different funds. So here we have your major funds, which is your general fund, which is the main operating fund. You guys hear about that all the time, and you know it's what you, you know, focus the budget on, making sure that you're, you're in budget and watching that general fund. And then this year, you have your 2022 sinking fund is also a major fund for you. All of the other funds of the district are combined into that third column, so your community service, your food service, your student and district activities, all of your debt funds, you have three debt funds, and then the various capital projects funds, all of those are combined into that third column. So we'll focus on your general fund. And you can see there, your cash was about $21 million, that was right in line with where you were last year, so no major changes. And then a couple lines down is due from other governmental units. That's really the amount of money that at June 30th, you're waiting to get from the state of Michigan for your state aid. So your July and August state aid, which is about $7.1 million, is sitting out there in a receivable. And then we have some federal grants and some funds from Oakland Schools that at June 30th, we were entitled to get, we just didn't have the money yet. So those are also included in that $8.4 million of due from other governmental units. In the middle of the page, then, are your liabilities, so you can see, obviously, the one that's gonna stand out is the $10.4 million of your accrued salaries payable. So that includes salaries payable and all the benefits, FICA retirement and fringes, you know, for the employees who have worked and earned that time, just hasn't been paid out to them yet. So a lot of them elected to get it paid over the summer, right? So at June 30th, they have earned it, the district just hasn't paid it to them yet. So it's shown as a liability in your general fund. And then the bottom half of the page is your fund balance, and we'll talk about that, too, on some future slides, but there's various rules as to what the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, you'll hear us refer to acronyms all the time, so we call it the GAZB, they're the ones that set the rules and tell us what we need to do and make sure you have it recorded properly. So your fund balance at the end of the year was about $16.6 million, and that was right around 20% of your total general fund expenditures, when we're looking at your total fund balance. And MDE had made a recommendation years ago that, you know, a comfortable level is 15% to 20% for a school district. So looking at your total fund balance, you're right in line with what they recommend. So the next slide here is your revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, and I know it looks weird, like, oh, you guys forgot a bunch of numbers in that second column. Well, of course, the GAZB had some rules last year about if you had a, a fund that was a major fund one year and not this year, you have to show, they call these ghost columns. So we included it in here, it matches your financials. It just means that last year, it was significant to be considered a major fund, this year it's not. So we're just showing it as is. But your general fund, then, the first column, you have local sources, state sources, and federal sources of revenue, and inter, inter-district sources. So property taxes is what makes up the majority of your local source revenue. Your state sources, as we mentioned, that's mainly all of your state aid dollars coming in there. The federal sources are your federal grants, title, ID, some of the COVID funds still coming in are included in that $3.3 million. And then your inter-district sources, the majority of that is the PA-18 funds that you get from the county special education millage. That's about $7.6 million that's sitting in there. And then we have all the expenditures, which I have a pie chart, and we'll talk about those in a little bit, of about $83.4 million. And we do just pop over, I want to point out something in the non-major governmental fund column, so the fourth column over, you'll see there's some amount, payment to bond, refunding escrow agent, it's like the third line up from the bottom. So that is something new this year because you did refund one of your bonds. So we have expenditures listed here, but on the next page, you're gonna see we have revenue from the, the new proceeds, that's really gonna almost offset that. So when you look at that and you're looking at total expenditures compared to last year and wonder, whoa, it went from $101 million up to $112 million. Most of that is because of the refunding there and it's just where we're showing it here. So on the next slide then is just a continuation of the revenue and expenditures. If we're looking at general fund, I mean, you almost broke even, that's pretty amazing that that the net change in fund balance there being, you know, negative 51,000. So I had went back and looked at your budget too. So every year you guys really amaze me on that. You have, you know, an 87 to 88 million dollar budget and how close you come to what really are your actual amounts at June 30th was within 2%. I mean, that's, that is outstanding. So I just want to point that out, great job of, you know, I know Kathy and her team are watching it, bringing it to the board to make those decisions to amend it to. But, you know, sometimes you see those fluctuations and it was like 1.9 million and to us, we're like, whoa, that's a big number. Not when you're looking at an 88, you know, million dollar budget, that's within 2%. So that's a great job there, I just wanted to point that out. Now the next couple of slides I have are, just to me, it's a little bit easier to look at it, visual picture instead of trying to trace some numbers across the page. So this is just showing where your general fund revenue is coming from. And you can see the blue section here, over half of your revenue in your general fund is coming from state sources. And then you have the next purple section there are your local sources. And then the rest is federal and then inter-district sources. So, you know, when we look at the state and local sources, about 87% of your revenue are coming from those two revenue streams. So the mix of revenue is within 1% of where the mix was last year too. So not a big fluctuation for you from year to year as to where your revenue is coming from. Now the expenditures then, we broke down the total and just to look at, okay, when we're looking at this, you can see that salaries and employee benefits is about 79% of the total general fund expenditures, which makes sense. Every district, you know, the largest expenditure they have is their people, right? So if you think of it, every dollar going out of the district, 79 cents is related to people, whether it be the salaries or the benefits there. And when I looked at that too, they were all within 1% allocation of what you had last year for your general fund expenditures. In this chart, we just put together, looking at the per pupil analysis. So we take your total general fund revenue and your total general fund expenditures and divide it by your pupil count. And just to say, okay, this is how much revenue you're getting per student and then this is how much you're spending per student. And, you know, we have been on an increase because there's been an influx in revenue right since the pandemic. So this chart, I mean, goes right along with that from 2021 on up, we've seen an increase. So I do just want to point out that there is a dip expected in that revenue for next year as it is budgeted there for 2026. And then we have your general fund fund balance, as I mentioned, there are various buckets we need to show that revenue or the fund balance in. And you had some assigned fund balance at the end of the year, about 6.1 million. So about 4.8 of that is for next year's budget. So we're thinking we're going to dip into fund balance a little bit, so we have that shown as the assigned fund balance. And then we also assigned some fund balance, about 1.3 million for some sick and vacation payout. So those people that have earned those compensated absences and what's expected to be paid out next year. And the rest of it, about 10.3 million is sitting in unassigned fund balance. And student enrollment trend too, we've been charting that since 2016 on here. So, you know, we've seen some decreases there in 21 through 23. Saw a little increase in 24 and just, I think, 18 student dip for 2025. And as a reminder, as you know, the state aid revenue, you know, is based on that pupil count. Your 2020 bond, oh yes.
Just as a reminder, when was the Shrine Program stopped? I always forget what year we did that because I know that impacted our student enrollment as well. I don't remember the year.
I don't remember the exact year, I believe it was three, three school years ago or four.
So maybe if I go back, it might be 22 to 23, do you think in that's.
Yeah, it must be between 18 and 19.
Those technically are shared time students that, just for the audience, Jamie and Joey, I know you guys know. Technically, those are shared time students that the public school was servicing while they attended a private school. And in exchange, we collected their FTE. And in order to collect their FTE, we had to count them for portions of the day that they were in elective courses. And so it looked like we had those kids, but in actuality, they were never our kids, they were not attending. We were just paying their elective teachers to service them and in exchange for paying their elective teachers, we were getting revenue off of each student. And so once that went away, it looks like students disappeared, but in actuality, they were never really our students. They went to, I believe, Berkeley and now are with Clarkston. That's a surprise for your, the migration report that I will be sending you. As we call that a cliffhanger.
Keep you on your toes. So this year you did spend the rest of those bond dollars that you had for your 2020 bond. So we're just showing here, you had 33.5 million in revenue and we've spent all of that. And then the governance letter, so that was that stapled letter I mentioned, there's some, a lot of information in there. A couple of things I'll just point out is we did have to adopt for GASB, two new standards this year. One is called 101 for compensated absences and the other one is 102 for certain risk disclosures. So you can ask Kathy how much she loved GASB 101 later. So we worked through that, it was a big calculation in how we have to then record sick and vacation time differently. So it was a lot of work on her end. So we also like to report there were no significant audit adjustments that need to be made this year. And we did pass on three adjustments, so those were not material to the financial statements. So we'd just like to disclose those here and we did not have any internal control matters, no significant deficiencies and no management comments or recommendations. And as I mentioned, the single audit, which is the federal piece, we did audit your child nutrition cluster, which was about 23% of the total federal dollars that you had. And in the draft compliance supplement that we had, it is yes or no. There is no gray area on that and we did not have any comments or recommendations either. So a great job to Kathy and her team. And then the last slide that I have are just some future challenges. I know you've talked about, a little bit about the budget environment too and we're sitting on pins and needles waiting for that. We have the unfunded pension liability, which are those legacy costs that we've been required to report on the district's books, about 84.3 million. And then just increased payroll costs as well. And with that, I would just like to thank Kathy and her team for all their hard work and professionalism. The audit process, you know, it takes a group effort of her team and our team. We collaborate, we work together really good and I just really appreciate them putting the audit as a priority. Your audit is, I would say, 99.9% done and I have two districts that haven't even started yet, so. And your district is a nice, you know, a good sized district too. So it just really goes to show how much work and effort they put into it, so I just wanted to thank her. Are there any questions that Joey can answer for you? Oh, you, let me see, what do you have? Did you miss, yep, that's it, you got it, yes. I know you're going to go home and read it.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to give a shout out to Kathy and her team.
Yeah.
You know, I think we were going through, you know, as the year went through, last year, we were kind of, you know, where are we going to end up at the end of the year? And her team came through and found some, you know, efficiencies and open, like the whole thing, she can explain. But we're just grateful to her team for doing all that. And I used to go through audits myself, I don't think they're fun, so God bless her for doing that. And we're grateful for the fiscal responsibility of our district, so thank you.
I just have one quick question. When you go back to the per pupil analysis of general fund revenues and expenditures. So when I look at that, it's my assumption that this is the amount of revenue that we bring in and we just divide that by the amount of, the number of students that we have. Because I think there's a lot of talk right now that there is one plan that is going to make a historic investment in students at $12,000 per pupil. And I just simply wanted to point out that $17,000 is significantly more than $12,000. So if you take, say, a categorical that adds up to $7,000 and some federal dollars are in there, I understand all of that. But all of the categoricals that we get, in addition to our per pupil funding, essentially add up to about $17,000. And so to take all of those categoricals away and give us a single funding source of $12,000, you're the math expert, she's bad at math actually, so I'm going to look at you too. But I just wanted to, like, what percentage of that would you say are, like, that idea that I'm kind of getting at? So of state categoricals, is that a majority of that, per pupil and state categoricals are a majority of that $17,000?
Yes.
In Royal Oak specifically?
Yes, let me tell you what that is. Oh yes, that would be about half.
Okay, so, you know, I mean, again, $14,000 per pupil, we get in FTE plus, that's less than, $12,000 is not 14,000. So just wanted to point that out to all of our constituents out there watching. Thank you, Jamie, I appreciate it. I know we give you a hard time.
Oh, it's okay.
Joey. Appreciate you.
Any other questions or comments on the audit?
May I? I just wanted to thank Jamie and Joey and their entire team, they are extremely professional. We start before we start because we have a, or they have a system that we can transfer information back and forth and that's how we communicate. So even before they were onsite, we had a lot of the documentation already provided to them and they had team members, I don't think I even met, that were certainly working on some of those. And maybe somebody that was on vacation this year that was taking care of that, wasn't Michael doing some stuff, but not here that week this year?
Just a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so always, always extremely professional. I call them my people because I'm an accountant, they're accountants. We might draw some T charts every now and then, do things like that. But it's, we, I don't want to go so far as to say I enjoy it because sometimes, you know, the audit's a little stressful because we're always looking for things. But I certainly need to thank cabinet, the board, all of the staff because we start with, you know, financial or federal guidelines, state laws, district policies, which turn into internal controls and district procedures that come from the board office. And all of those things that we do every day get to this clean audit. This isn't an accident that's done, or it's not an accident, but it's certainly not something that's done by four or five people during the summer when everybody's off on their summer break. It's something that's done each day, every day that we take a lot of pride in. And then it's very easy to get to this point. So I'd like to thank your staff, Joey, all of your staff and then certainly everybody that's been involved in this process.
Thank you. Any other comments? Nothing from Pam?
I did have a question, so when you talked about you're waiting for the federal government, I know this is going to be a crazy question, but do they have a deadline?
No.
Okay, just ask, just ask.
We have a deadline November 1st. A worst case scenario, okay, worst case scenario, we can submit the financial statement and that letter and not do the single audit piece by November 1st. Now, you know, it's every single district in the state of Michigan is in your boat right now with you. So we are going to wait until MDE tells us what they want us to do if we get that close. I mean, we're really hoping it comes soon. And we're just pushing through, you know, there's only so many, you know, weekdays to present at board meetings for all of our districts between now and November 1st, that we're just pushing through and we're just going to wait until we get that.
Brings a question to my mind, is it every district in the state of Michigan or is it every district in the nation?
MDE has their own rules.
So it's just, okay.
So other states, they kind of sometimes will follow under like a county school district. And so it is, that is a requirement of the state of Michigan, the November 1st deadline. Yep.
Anything else? Brings us to agenda item 6.5.1, which is the acceptance of the audit. I'd like to entertain a motion. Trustee Van Heetsma.
Do we do an acceptance of the draft audit? It's a draft except. Be it resolved, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby accepts the independent audit report as presented by Yoan Yo for the 2425 fiscal year, which ended June 30th, 2025. Yoan Yo completed their audit with an unmodified opinion and a complete report has been presented to the Board of Education. The audit report and resolution indicating acceptance will be filed in accordance with state and local laws.
Thinking, do we have a second? Trustee Cook. Any comments on the motion before us?
Is that really true, what we said? Well, it said they complete, is the audit complete? I think, I do think it's accurate because it is as presented. So that includes them saying it's a draft, they are included, that is included as an unmodified opinion. I think that that's the cleanest way to say it.
Right, any other questions or comments? Senior call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. To agenda item 7 tonight, which is communications. And I would like to ask Secretary Anderson to present the communications.
We have received a few since our last meeting, Rebecca Gilbert, Sarah Culpepper and Rebecca Cheesem.
Thank you, any comments or questions or anything on the communications report? Senior, thank you. Item 8 tonight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda generally consists of routine matters as well as items we've covered during this meeting or another board meeting or committee meeting. All items are presented in the minutes, which are published for the, published following the meeting at which they were approved. All of our committee and board meetings are open to the public and the public is, public comment is a agenda item. We invite members of the public to join our committees. Consent agenda tonight consists of 8.1, payment of expenses. Any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? Senior, the consent agenda is approved as presented. It's to item 9.1 tonight, which is the super intense report and I'll turn it over to Dr. Tofelsky.
Hello, everybody and good evening. So for 9.9.1, we have the first reading of the revised, replaced and or recommended policies and guidelines as presented. And I believe I read this one right, this is the first time I've actually done this. Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a first reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced and or recommended as presented in the board packet. And 9.1.2, the second reading of the revised, replaced and or recommended policies and guidelines. The recommendation, resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a second reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced and or recommended as presented.
Thank Dr. Tofelsky. Go back to agenda item 9.1.1 as presented by Dr. Tofelsky, do we have a motion? Trustee Wiki. Is there a second? Trustee Van Heetsma. Now is there any discussion on 9.1.1, which is the first reading of those three policies? Senior, a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion is carried. Bring us back to 9.1.2, which is the second reading as presented by Dr. Tofelsky, do we have a motion? Trustee Cook. Is there a second? Vice President Alexander, is there any discussion on that policy presented for first reading? That's the second reading. We can do it again next week if you want. Now, senior discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Second reading is also approved. Anything else from Dr. Tofelsky?
I just have two, a couple of quick stories. So today, obviously, we have the looming state budget that's kind of hanging over all of our heads. And then, of course, we had a remembrance of September 11th happening across our district. Dr. Yoonas and I got the opportunity to go to a couple of schools and walk around a little bit today. I have two quick stories from those schools. One, we were in an upper L class at Oak Ridge today and they were reading a book about September 11th. And one of the kids remarked that as he was reading Dogman, one of the characters in Dogman said, and it reminded him of the story, look for the helpers. And I just really love that lesson.
And I just really love that lesson that the teacher went through with her students, and I believe that that is a quote that is attributed to Mr. Rogers. And it's just really great that we have these learning moments for our students about these really, really tough things. But then our teachers, as magical as they are, make those moments about how you can help other people and how you can lift up other people. And they talked about the courageous acts of all of the people on September 11th, as was reflected in our board resolutions today. And so it just kind of like made me smile walking out of that classroom that we had this kid who was connecting this very serious topic with this very serious book, and then was like, in Dog Man, I read Look for the Helpers. And like, everybody in the class was like, oh, yeah, I read that before, and I, you know, it was just a great moment. The second really great thing that I think, like, this is what makes public education so great. I was walking in Upton this morning, and there were two older girls, they were, turned out to be fifth graders, and they were walking through the first and second kindergarten and first grade hallway. And all of a sudden, this little girl like comes shooting by me and like runs and jumps on one of them, and I'm like, oh, that's really nice, is that your little sister? And the little girl goes, no, these were my buddies last year when I was in kindergarten. And like, the joy that this little girl had when she saw her fourth and fifth grade buddies, and the kindness that they displayed to her by like hugging her back and saying like, hey, how are you doing this morning? This is great, and then like shuffling off to their class. It was just, it was just wonderful, and it's, you know, I mean, if you're ever down, go visit an elementary school and walk around for a little bit because it was just a really great way to, great way to start my day, and then really at Oak Ridge kind of finish our day. The Learning Council also met today, Math and ELA led by the Curriculum Department. That was less exciting than, you know, kids being joyous in the hallways, but still is important. And so I think they're engaging in really important work where they're kind of diving into data, and I know the Board is eager to get a data presentation. And so sooner rather than later at one of our board meetings, Dr. Yoonis will be presenting some data to the Board. And then finally, tomorrow is the debut episode of a podcast that features yours truly. It's called Shaking the Tree, and in the first episode, I was interviewed by Mia Waterstrat. Did I get the name correct? Mia is our Student Congress President, an impressive, an impressive Royal Oak student, and like, I'm just amazed every time I talk to, you know, 23 years in education, I was a high school principal for nine years, and like, every time a kid talks to me, I'm just amazed at how much smarter they are than I was when I was their age. And so like, Mia was no exception. She was fantastic. So that drops tomorrow. Jared, on all of their podcasts, no, I'm just kidding, you'll see the link on it. Oh, Get Out of Town, really? That is unbelievable. I'm on Apple and Spotify with Mia Waterstrat tomorrow at about 1:00 PM, apparently. I'll send a link out, it'll be on our socials, and it's just so cool. And Mr. Conrad and Jared are facilitating the conversation, and it's really good. I got a lot of this from Mr. Conrad and Jared, no surprise for anybody that knows me, but thank you very much. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
I probably think, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Tofelski?
I do have a quick comment. I just wanted everyone to know that Dr. Tofelski is working on a plan with me to shorten up my conversations, so although he's able to identify his, he is quick to let me know 15 minutes and out, 14 minutes and less, so I'm working on getting to that point, so thank you.
If I am telling Dr. Yoonis, he is verbose. We know we got a problem, so we have a personal goal with Dr. Yoonis, and it is to, you know, don't say 50 words when five will do. I'm a terrible teacher for that.
It works, it works.
Pat needs to be the mentor.
He does say that, too.
Not me or Kathy, that's a bad situation.
Moving to Item 9.2 tonight, which is curriculum and instruction. This is to Dr. Yoonis, and I understand 15 minutes or less.
Does it start when Vivy connects or after that? Because that's all counts. Well, thank you, President Chorsky. I want to just talk a little bit about our monthly video. Now, when we met with our team, we previously had the title of Insight into Learning, and we talked about changing it to Insight into Excellence. Of course, we're a community of excellence. We wanted to expand beyond just what's happening in our classrooms and kind of present some things across the district. So thank you to Jared for working again hard to secure the teachers and staff members to put this video together, but our insight into excellence is Grow Your Own program for our topic. Grow Your Own program is a program that was state-funded, got passed a couple of years ago, and the idea is just employees of a district get their education paid for by the state, and during that time, they remain employed by the district and then eventually grow into the role of teaching once they graduate from university.
I think the most valuable part of the Grow Your Own program is that it allowed me to earn my master's degree for free, no cost to me, while still working full-time in the district. And when it came time for me to do student teaching or do observation hours, the grant covered that as well, so I didn't have to use my paid time off. So it was designed so I could still work full-time, still work in the district, but also earn my master's towards my special education degree.
I've worked in the district now for, this is my ninth year. I started out as a lunch monitor, and then I moved from a lunch monitor to be a paraprofessional, and I've been working at the high school for the past eight years. And I loved working in special ed, and this program came up, and I felt like it was a perfect opportunity to be able to continue my education and learn more about special ed and what I really like to do.
The support I have gotten from Royal Oak Schools with my colleagues, my mentors, administrators, has just been awesome and overwhelming. Everyone's really been cheering me on this whole process. I've worked in the district for a while, so when people learned what I was doing, they were so excited for me and were always checking in to ask me how it was going, and they couldn't wait till I was done. And then when I did graduate, it was, it was like a, they just, all the love from everyone was just amazing.
I think the most valuable part is that you are working on the job while you're in school, so it kind of works in a way like an apprenticeship. So instead of only getting classroom experience during student teaching like most people do from university, I had been working in a classroom for three and a half years before I actually came on as a teacher. So it creates a much more comfortable transition for people coming into the career.
I feel like it's, it's really important for me to be able to be a teacher now. I, like I said, I started out as a lunch monitor, and, you know, then I went from to para, and now I'm a teacher. And I think it's like, I feel like a role model, because I have two kids of my own that are in the school district. I've worked with like their friends, like, and they've kind of seen me grow and progress through all this, and I think it's important for them to see that success can happen, like, just right here in Royal Oak, and you can, you can grow and keep learning, and you're never told to do that.
To become a teacher in the same community that I've already been a part of for so long means a lot to me. I have worked as a paraprof for eight years, and I loved it, and I loved special education and helping the students. I really feel like it's being on the front line in education, and so getting to further my career and earn this degree is meant a lot to me.
Having the support of teachers, staff, administration throughout my time in the program is basically everything to me. I think it's arguably more important than the schooling itself. It transforms the teaching program at a university into almost like an apprenticeship role to where we are more so learning on the job while learning the theory at the same time. So it allows us to apply that theory while we're learning on the job, but then also have the feedback from staff while I'm doing it. So I was able to take a ton of like constructive criticism from staff on in the classroom, get that encouragement of like, oh, you're doing this right, this is great that you're doing this or that. Being able to take over roles that I normally wouldn't be able to, where it's like, if they need some time to grade or to work with a student, they might say, hey, can you run this review real quick for a few of these guys that are a little behind? Administration, it felt really good to have their backing for the sake of just knowing they want me here. It makes me want to be here. So it gives me more fulfillment and more like want to remain here in this position and to really try and fill out my career here for as long as I possibly can.
Just one more quick thank you here to Mr. Walensky and Mrs. Nipper. Part of our strategic plan is, one of our goals is to attract and retain the best staff. So I know Mr. Walensky and Mrs. Nipper work together closely, not only on the grant side, but also on the staffing side. As you heard from some of the staff members, they were current parapros in our district, or educators in our district. So thank you to Mr. Walensky and Mrs. Nipper for working to fill those positions while they were kind of going to school and then doing their student teaching component. So again, wonderful opportunity for our staff members to grow within our district, and thank you to all that were involved there. One last quick update. Dr. Tofelski did talk a little bit about our Learning Council members today that worked hard to begin to work on some strategic goals throughout the district. Since Dr. Tofelski has joined us, he's placed a very strong emphasis on achievement data, not only taking a look at what our scores are, but also taking a look at what's happening in the classroom that impacts those scores. So he has set the stage at a district level and at an internal administrative level to begin to look more closely at the data and what our students are achieving, and we've kind of followed his lead and are working on a school improvement process, revamping our school improvement process, starting with creating some district goals and then working at the building level with those goals today. So I do want to take some time to thank some teachers that attended and worked today. Bethany Carline, Kate Chambers, Lauren Hyde, Mary Ann Campbell, Megan McCaffery, Hannah Sells, Molly Brinker, Jen Kosis, and Ed Maudlin. They worked with our Curriculum Department today throughout the day on math and reading. We began to look, they began to look at data, MSTEP data, PSAT, SAT, iReady scores. Again, looking at what our data says, looking at our groups within our school district, and then beginning to go through a data protocol that helps us better understand what the data says, what it looks like, and maybe making some inferences. Again, so thank you, Dr. Tofelski, for helping us understand the importance of achievement data, not just identifying the scores, but then beginning to look at how we can make an impactful change. So we're excited about seeing the connectedness across our district, and that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Yoonis? Trustee Van Heetsma.
So I'm really excited about the success of the Grow Your Own program, so I love hearing about that. Do we have a sense of, and it doesn't matter if you don't have it right now, but the number of people that we've had come through that program? Or how many are currently maybe in part of that program?
Yeah, we do have that information. I can include that in the report for tomorrow. We have some students that are, that were in the program, and some of them had some other struggles and weren't able to continue through it. But unfortunately, the time has ended to take any more new applicants for the Grow Your Own program, but we do have that information, and I can share that as part of the Dr. Tofelski's report tomorrow. And I know I can get some information from Mr. Walensky, too, as far as the numbers. But, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? No, excellent. Thank you, Dr. Yoonis.
Thank you.
It's to 9.3 this evening, which is our Finance Facilities and Bond Report, and I will ask Mrs. Abella to present.
Good evening. We've heard that the audit is complete, mostly, right, because we're waiting for that compliance supplemental. Now that that's complete, we've turned our attention to filing all the reports for that. So Kim Boyce, our finance manager, and Daisy Ozdich, our accountant, mostly work on those reports. Special ed cost report, transportation report, the Financial Information Database, which is how we transmit all of that data to the state that wind up on all those metrics that Dr. Tofelski likes to look at through metrics and other, that's how that all gets there. So we're working towards that. Tomorrow is the first teacher pay of the new school year. That's always exciting, making sure that everybody's in the right place and that we've paid everybody properly on the new scale, things like that. So that's all complete for tomorrow morning. We've already talked a little bit about some of the other things. We currently have no movement on the state budget. I did, was included on an online MSBO/MDE webinar that was hosted by MSBO earlier today. So a lot of the things that we've already talked about or we're already doing were the things that they were covering. What to be ready for for your audit, how to file the 4096, Daisy filed ours today, things like that. So I feel like we're in really good shape as we press forward into this new school year. I'd like to thank Jeff and his team again. The school buildings looked great as we started school two weeks ago. This is our first meeting since we started school. Transportation has been working through some small issues here and there, but otherwise running flawlessly. So everything from operations and facilities and finance is kind of just moving forward right now. So unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have this evening. No state budget, Ms. Anderson, no state.
That is not my question for once. I was gonna ask, though, there is concern about the school lunch program and the need to, you know, for free and reduced price lunch.
So the state budget goes through September 30th of 2025. So for the month of September, I see Mr. Jacobs is still back there. By the way, food service is also flawless. That falls under operations. It is, we are free through September with, we have no guidance moving forward after October 1st. So we will certainly communicate if there are any changes come October 1st to that. We have asked parents to continue to fill out free and reduced lunch applications. That helps regardless of the state program. We certainly want those because that helps with other things and helps families get additional resources. So right now, we're free through September 30th for all. Thank you.
Anybody else? No, see no? Sure.
Thank you. So my name is Noel. I'm from Five Card Union, and our three focus pillars are financial literacy, housing insecurity, and food insecurity. So with that being said about the lunch program ending, what you just mentioned, is this something that we can help you with after September?
Maybe. I can grab your contact information after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Like, Item 9.4 tonight is Staff and Student Services. I'll ask Mr. Walensky.
Thank you, Mr. Chorsky. Well, we've heard a lot about the absence of a state budget, so I'll start there. I'm gonna talk about enrollment, and then we have a personnel report. We have quite a few personnel changes for your approval tonight, and I'll explain that. As Jamie said, we're not certain about a state budget yet, but we will receive funding, and we are certain it will be tied to enrollment. So of great interest to us is, will our enrollment be up a little bit, and we're hopeful it will be. We need it to be up a little bit. And I'll talk a little bit about that. I've been updating you monthly on developmental kindergarten and kindergarten enrollment because that's a big indicator. How many new children do we enroll? I don't typically talk about how many we exit, but I'll talk about that as well, because those are both good indicators. Our kindergarten and developmental kindergarten this year is a little bit down. It's 429 total. Last year was 456. So we're down 27 children there, but let me explain why I still think we'll be up a little bit. We had a smaller-than-usual graduating class this past year from Royal Oak High School. We graduated 33 fewer children than the, or students, 18-year-olds, than the prior year. And also through schools of choice, not counting kindergarten, we'd covered that, in first grade through eighth grade, we are up 51 children through schools of choice, and they're attending. So you add those together, that's a 57 student increase, which could be significant. Our current enrollment analysis, and Barb Sparks would have never let me say this because it's too soon, nothing's confirmed until the count date, we're up at least 70 students. October 1st is the fall count date, so we want students in seats then. If they're not, it doesn't mean we can't count them. We just have to confirm that they're enrolled. If a student's absent on October 1st and they have an excused absence, they have 30 days to return. If they don't return within 30 days, my guess is they're not returning. If they're unexcused absent, we have 10 school days for them to return. But next month, I will have a much more firm idea of whether enrollment is up or down, and I suspect it will be up. Mrs. Abella, I believe, budgeted for flat enrollment to be conservative, but do you have any questions about enrollment before we talk about personnel?
Mr. Walensky, is the student count day count usually pretty accurate to what our count is? Is there a huge amount of people who don't come to school on that particular day for any reason?
Uh, no, no, it's pretty good. Our, what we project and what we enroll, what we enroll, what we project is pretty accurate. The number of kids attendance on that day is pretty accurate.
Our average daily attendance is typically above 90%, too, so. Most days, we're getting everybody, all of our kids in seats, which is great.
Thank you.
Okay, so Item 9. Okay, so item 9.4.1 is our personnel report, and it's pretty lengthy. There's 23 changes, and I'll go through those quickly. We have 10 resignations and 13 recommendations for hire, and I'll summarize those. Part of the reason we have 10 resignations is seven of them were people that had intended to resign and didn't notify us. There were paraeducators that resigned over the summer. We found out after the August board meeting, so we backdated their resignation to their actual last day of work, which was June 12th. We also received resignations from two teachers, which isn't uncommon in August, and our communication specialist, Amy Murphy. Our 13 recommendations for hire, it's not uncommon to have quite a few in August, are for five paraeducators, six teachers, one media tech, and one supervisor of secondary special education. Letitia Thwait is replacing Rob Dietiker, who retired in August. And although I typically, I normally invite administrators here to this board meeting when they're approved to be introduced, Letitia could not be here tonight, but she can be here in October, and it is our plan to invite all of our new hires to the October meeting. School year's underway, hopefully we'll get most of them available to come in and be introduced. So for the new school year, we had 41 new hires total, which, which is down from last year. Last year, I believe, we had 80. We still have seven paraeducators to hire district-wide, a social worker, and a career development coordinator for Royal Oak High School, but we're doing well. Our classroom teacher positions are filled. Any questions? That is item 9.4.1.
Trusty Cook.
So when we have paraeducator vacancies, are those ever filled by substitutes?
By substitute teachers? Well, we have substitute paras.
The reason I ask is we have a number of, you know, paraeducators on this report, and you said that there's how many more that we need to hire?
We have seven more. We have seven vacancies currently that we need to, that we're in the process of trying to fill, yes. And so we do have, through edge of staff, subs that sub for a paraabsence, and of course, we recruit them, but some of them don't want to work more every day. And sometimes if we're desperate to be in compliance with an IEP, we'll cover that vacancy with a subteacher.
Any other questions for Mr. Walensky? Senior, I'd like to call for a motion for 9.4.1. Vice President Alexander.
Resolve the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the regular personnel changes as presented in the board packet.
Do we have a second? Everybody, I'll pick trusty Wiki. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Senior, a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. This brings us to agenda item 10 this evening, which is the second opportunity for public comments. Anybody from the audience who wishes to address the board? Senior, moving on to item, just kidding, last minute.
Should I go to the podium or something? Doesn't matter. Is it on?
Sir, it looks like there's a pen and paper on the table. If you could just fill out your name and address for us so we can respond to anything you tell us.
Just a couple of things I was noting down while you guys were talking. That Grow Your Own program, is that for high school students or is it just for people that are in college?
It's for staff members. You have to have your bachelor's degree, and then usually staff members working in a school district are looking to increase their college degree and then work in a school setting as a teacher.
I thought I saw something at Rochester and Birmingham that they had one for students.
Oh, yeah, there's a teacher cadet program through a CTE-type partnership program. You know what? It's funny, you might know Ms. Harris, she's one of her CTE teachers at the high school, a wonderful person. She did send me an email before the school year started with some information regarding starting a teacher cadet CTE program. But we done some inquiries on it, but we haven't moved forward yet, but she did share that with me.
I believe OSTC. Okay.
Sorry, I believe OSTC, who we have a partnership with, has a teacher cadet program there. So our students do have access to OSTC.
I've been trying to follow along on social media with that. There was a survey that went out about safe routes to school. Is that something that's like ongoing or have those results been out? I haven't seen anything. Or is the survey still open? Was that just a grant thing that we were going for or is it like an ongoing project that you guys are working on?
That survey is part of the beginning steps of a grant, probably mid-steps of the grant that we're working on.
So we wrapped up our mini-grant that the school district got, and now we're working with the city and Commissioner Cheesom to get a larger grant, which is, you know, we would obviously benefit from our children having safe routes to schools, but a majority of that is, would be funds that the city would use to kind of make sidewalks easier and put in traffic lights and crosswalks and things like that. So they are, the city and Commissioner Cheesom are kind of quarterbacking that while we support with PTSA and student organizations and things like that.
With Smart Bus being at that community thing at the high school, were they involved, you know, in that community discussion at all about safe routes to school and the use of Smart and like the route they have with the middle school and high school?
Yeah, so Smart is an organization that we do work with specific to safe routes to school. Like that would be something that I'd have to check with Ms. Nipper about who kind of ran the mini-grant, but.
Okay. That's it.
Perfect. I promise you got answers to all of those sometime soon. Anybody else from the audience who wishes to address the board? Senior, back to item 11 tonight, which is board comments and liaison reports. Start with any board member comments. Secretary Anderson.
I have a few questions for Dr. Tofelski. I see several things on our calendar that include soup with the super and state of the schools and coffee with the super. Could you let the community know more about these opportunities to know more about our district?
Yes, so soup, I believe it has been since renamed. I believe it is soup and salad with the superintendent. We want to make sure that we're inclusive of everybody. So you non-soup eating folks will have a place at the table. So that is on September 24th, and that is at the Senior Center. And help me with how we say this, is it Marais? Maray? Okay, so that is on Maray, and that's from 11:30 to 1:00, so I'll be there. And then we're gonna have some high school athletes there as well, and I'm happy to come and chat with folks. On, that's September 24th again, from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Senior Center on Maray. We are also doing another coffee with the superintendent on October 7th, and I believe that is at 9:00 AM at the Office Coffee Shop, or am I wrong about that? Is it 8:00 AM at the Office Coffee Shop? Sorry. 8:00 AM at the Office Coffee Shop, and that's downtown. And if you come, we will buy you, happily buy you a cup of coffee, and you can probably sneak a pastry in there, and I wouldn't be upset about that. So Ms. Isabella might have something to say about it when I hand her my P-card receipt, but Danish is for all.
What date is that?
Pardon me?
What date is that?
That is October 2nd.
Okay.
At 8:00 AM at the Office Coffee Shop, and that's right downtown.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And then finally, on September 3rd, I went out of order there. I apologize for that. On September 30th, we have the state of the schools address at 7:00 PM, and I believe that is right here in this facility. And I'm working on an exhilarating PowerPoint to give you the current state of the schools. And I promise to bring the energy that evening, so. And that is state of the schools, September 30th at 7:00 PM. You know, Mike, can we get Danish's for the state of the schools, please? I prefer cheese, if you don't mind. I enjoy a good cheese Danish. And a salad. That sounds disgusting. Pick one or the other, Mike. You can either have salad or Danish, just not both. I draw the line there. I think I hit that, Secretary Anderson. Thank you.
Trusty Van Heidsma.
Oh my God, comedy night. Well, I'm glad you, somebody raised the, the safe routes to school because it actually came up at my PTA meeting this week. So we were talking a bit about that and the city reaching out to the PTAs to engage them to help with the data collection as well as the survey. So I don't know the status of that as of right now, but I know that there's been work on that.
So, yeah, Commissioner Cheesom, and I hope I'm saying her name right. Okay, cool. I didn't want to call her Becca, but Commissioner Cheesom has been working with our PTA council, and then she's reached out to individual PTAs. She has been working with principals. So I, we have looped her into everything, and then her and I have actually talked about, you know, if we have events or things like that. In my previous few roles, when we were running bond campaigns, one of the most successful parts of our bond campaign was to put kids in uniforms and in the Royal Oak shirts and have them out like knocking on doors and doing things. And so I think that'd be a wonderful opportunity to bring our middle and high school students together with some of our PTAs on like a safe routes to school audit day kind of a thing. So I don't know when we're gonna be able to get that done, but stay tuned for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Also, Royal Oak Youth Assistance was here earlier, so I think I mentioned it last month, that the Bowl-a-thon is November 16th. It's coming back after five years. Very excited, the new website is up for Roya, and the links to the Bowl-a-thon are there. So hopefully, we can get good participation in that and instill a little bit of competitiveness amongst the team here, perhaps. That would be really nice. And I also want to give a shout out to our student board members. A few of them are here today. They stuck it out with us at a finance and facilities meeting last week for hours. So I, you know, I'm just really grateful for the level of student engagement and you wanting to learn and understand and be a part of decisions and so forth. So just a huge shout out to our students. I'm very grateful for that.
I would add about the finance and facilities meeting, the students who were there didn't just sit it out. I mean, they participated in the meeting. We got some really valuable insight from them, so good on them.
No, thank you very much for that. And that's all I had. Thank you. Oh.
Go ahead, Grace.
I was just wondering, Dr. Tofelski, are there any opportunities to meet with you outside of school hours for students?
Yes.
Okay.
You tell me when and where, and I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't think 8:00 AM at the Office Coffee Shop is conducive to student meeting?
Maybe on a weekend.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do evening. So if you would like to talk to your fellow student board members, my voice just cracked. If you would like to talk to your fellow student board members, Grace, I'm more than happy to come up with a time, and if it's the weekend, that's fine.
Okay.
I might have two little kids with me, or one, or neither. It just depends. I'm thinking they're gonna say no and protest.
Thank you.
I just think this would be a good time to plug that we do have board member lunches that come to the high school, and often the superintendent would be there as well, so that's another opportunity.
Yes, I'm planning on being there. And actually, I was at lunch the other day, and another shout out to Mike, it was unbelievable. I had like a Chipotle Bowl style. It was so, it was turkey barbacoa. Who was there? Who was just, oh, it was Jennifer. So it's turkey barbacoa, it was rice, and it was like this corn, and it was delicious. I was so happy. And so I got to walk around at lunch and talk and eat a little bit and hang out with some people. So I will be there periodically, and like you can come up and say hi to me. I know that's a little weird because like I know not any student is just going to walk up and like tap me on the shoulder, but you're more than welcome too, Grace, and I will, please give me some, some dates and times or like an idea of where you all would like to meet, and I'm happy to come. So, but yeah, I'm at events too and just like, just watching, so come talk.
Trusty Jocinski.
Normally, I would like to speak from the heart, but I did write this down, so I didn't miss anything. But we had spoken last week that we wanted to address something in a slightly different way. So for the last four years, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education has read a secure storage resolution during that first portion of our September meeting, which you heard several of this morning. And while the board and our district wholeheartedly support and agree with that sentiment continued, contained in that proclamation, we wanted to take an opportunity to update our community on some gun safety legislation, share some actions that our district is taking, and acknowledge the horrible acts of violence across our country this month. Gun violence is the leading cause of death of children in the United States. The statistic has been true since 2020. An estimated 4.6 million children live in homes with loaded unlocked firearms. Erica acknowledged earlier that September is Suicide Awareness Month. We know that 80% of children, of child firearm suicides involved a gun obtained from their home or that of a friend or relative. Suicide rates among children who live in homes with firearms are four times higher than those without firearms. Most unintentional firearm-related shootings among children occur in or around a home, and most firearms used in school shootings perpetrated by shooters under the age of 18 are acquired from a home, from their own home or a home of a relative. These are stark and scary facts. However, research does indicate that strong child access prevention laws decrease unintentional shootings, suicides, and school shootings. States with secure storage or child access prevention laws had the lowest rates of injury or death from unintentional shootings, but only 14 states in our country currently have them. In 2023, Michigan became that 14th state. This, yeah, yes, round of applause for that. This means that if you live in a home with a child under 18, or if a child under 18 visits your home regularly, your firearm needs to be stored, locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition. In January of this year, an additional public act called Safe Homes, Safe Schools was passed to support our secure storage laws that requires all school districts like us in Michigan, beginning October 1st, to share regular secure storage resources and freer low-cost secure storage options to families in our communities. By distributing this information on the safe storage law to students and their families, more Michiganders can be aware of the law and can take action to abide by that guidance. So what does this look like for us here in Royal Oak? Our district regularly communicates information about the importance of secure storage and will continue to do so via our district dispatch, our website, social media, and our principal newsletters. In addition, I'm sure that you've seen our Be Smart volunteers at tables at school gatherings and welcome back events and opportunities to interact with them. We also are really proud that we have free gun locks for handguns available to families in our district at all of our building's front offices, no questions asked. And beginning next fall, there is going to be an acknowledgement of the state's secure storage laws included in all of our school registration processes. Royal Oak dedicates a lot of time and resources to keeping our emergency operating plans, as Mr. Walensky knows, up to date and communicated clearly to our staff and our partners in law Only in the United States would I need to edit prepared remarks about gun violence several times in a single week. The timing of these updates and my comments serve as an important reminder, sorry, as we begin a new school year together, but I also cannot ignore that for some students this year began very differently. Our thoughts, love, and hearts go out to the families. Students in surrounding communities of the Enunciation Catholic School in Minnesota, Utah Valley University, and Evergreen High School in Colorado, whose lives have been forever altered. These are only the most recent locations of school shootings this month and don't account for the hundreds of lies impacted on a regular basis across our state that don't make headlines. This type of violence is heartbreaking, but most importantly, preventable. As sad as I am today, I do believe that we can work together. I have to believe that we can work together to prevent further tragedies, and open and honest communication and conversation about secure storage is one step in that process. So thanks for giving me just a moment of time, and we just felt like a more comprehensive update and explanation of where we were at and what we're doing together was better than a proclamation this year. So, thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? No, seen none. We are adjourned at 8:15.